Welcome, everyone, and call the June 25, 2019 Port Orchard City Regular City Council Meeting to order. And, and then I have to hit the gavel. And if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any proposed amendments to the published agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Okay, very good. We are now on to our first citizens' comment period. And the public comment period is limited to items on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council, please raise your hand and be acknowledged.
Or is there anyone in the audience?
Or if there's anyone in the audience, yeah. So seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, the consent agenda has been moved and seconded to approve as published. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the consent agenda has been accepted. We have no presentations this evening. We do have a public hearing. And the public hearing is on the permanent ordinance to regulate social service facilities to house sexually violent predators and repeal interim ordinance number 015-19. Nick, would you like to speak to that before I open the public hearing?
Yes, please. On October 9th, or I'm sorry, on April 9th, 2019, the city council adopted an emergency interim zoning ordinance, ordinance 15-19, to provide regulations for the siting and development of secured residential facilities for sexually violent predators. Per RCW 3670A 390, the council is required to hold a hearing within 60 days of adoption of the interim ordinance. The council held a public hearing on May 14th, 2019. Following the public hearing, the council directed staff to work with the city attorney to prepare a permanent ordinance based on the emergency interim ordinance to be adopted by the end of June 2019. And I would add that this went to the Planning Commission at their June meeting and has recommendation of approval.
Okay, with that information, I will open the public hearing. And is there anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. And we will move on to Agenda Item A, which is adopting an ordinance amending the Port Orchard Municipal Code to provide permanent regulations for the siting and development of secured residential facilities and repeal ordinance number 01519. So I will let you speak to that, Mr. Bond.
This is the same issue I just presented, and this is the action to adopt that ordinance. I can read the staff report again if you'd like.
No, that's fine. What's council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 20.39 Port Orchard Municipal Code to provide permanent regulations for the siting and development of secured residential facilities for sexually violent predators and repeal interim ordinance number 015-19.
Second.
Okay, we'll open for discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion? But you did indicate that the Planning Commission reviewed this and approved it.
They recommended approval.
Recommended approval.
Yeah.
Correct, okay. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on the motion. Although the motion on the floor up for adoption is to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 20.39 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code to provide permanent regulations for the siting and development of secured residential facilities for sexually violent predators and repealing interim ordinance number 01519. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. So that ordinance passed. We will move now to the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapters 20.39 and 20.58 residential yard, garage, and estate sales, charitable auctions, and rummage sales, and temporary uses exempt from permanent requirements. And this again, Mr. Bond, or did you want Doug to speak to it?
I'll speak to it first. For Items 7, B, C, and D, these are all code enforcement issues that Mr. Price has worked on, and so he's here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. These items were reviewed by the Planning Commission and all carry the Planning Commission's recommendation. And I will let Doug present these issues.
Okay. And the first being the residential yard, garage, and estate sales, and charitable auctions and rummage sales, and the temporary uses exempt from permits. And this was reviewed by the council last week at the study session. And it's returned with just two very minor changes to Section 3 regarding charitable auctions, rummage, and jumble sales in residential zones, adding limitation on the hours from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and restricting the placement, or prohibiting the placement of goods in the public right-of-way. And it's otherwise unchanged from what the council reviewed last week.
What's the council's pleasure? Mr. Clausen?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapters 20.39 and 20.58 as they relate to residential yard, garage, and estate sale, auctions, and rummage, and jumble sales in residential zones, and to temporary use exempt from permitting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Oh, finally, we've got discussion.
I just had a quick question. And on page 45 of 155, the difference between residential yard, garage, and estate sales and charitable auctions and rummage, I was just curious because number 7 under the residential was not in charitable auction. I was just kind of curious why they weren't kind of the same language.
Sure. And that's because the residential garage, yard, and estate sales are the personal events and/or the professional estate sale events. And so those should be limited to the things that either belong to the household or the people involved in the sale, whereas a charitable auction or rummage sale is typically donated items that come from all over the place and could be, could include new items, especially with an auction. They could include new items from businesses, so they'd be commercial items that are donated. So you wouldn't want to place a similar restriction on those type of goods.
Again, how you look at it and stuff, so that helps. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion to approve, adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapters 20.39 and 20.58 as they relate to residential yard, garage, and estate sales, auctions, and rummage sales, and jumble sales in residential zone, and to the temporary uses exempt from permitting. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, did anyone? Yeah, John did.
Oh, okay. Right.
John and Sean have been just...
Okay, they're on a roll.
Yeah.
So long ago, I forgot.
Yeah, exactly. Is there anyone opposed?
Put our stride with the question.
The one climate threw us off. Right. Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, then that motion passes. We will move then to adopting an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapter 20.66, vehicle service and repair accessories to residential uses. And again, Mr. Bond, we will move to you.
Yes, so again, this is an ordinance that Mr. Price worked on, and it's an update to an existing chapter that we adopted within the last two years on vehicle service and repairs as an accessory use to residential uses. And Mr. Price, if you want to provide additional explanation, please do.
Sure. And the main focus of this amendment is that this provides definitions that were not provided in the previous version. It removes some restrictions relating to the ownership of vehicles that would not have been tenable, and extends the prohibition on work in the right-of-way to also include private roads and easements. And this similarly was presented to the council at study session last week and has been changed in response to council comments. The former definitions of vehicle and equipment service and repair work, work major and work minor, have been rewritten into two separate definitions, one of vehicles and equipment and one of work, which is then subdivided into major work and minor work. And then just some very minor clerical change to a couple of other definitions, a word or two, so they all consistently read in the form of such and such term means such and such definition.
Mr. Chang?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapter 2066 as presented.
Second.
Is there discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we will vote on adopting the proposed ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal — I can talk tonight — Chapter 20.66 as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. And that ordinance passes. Thank you. We are on now to adoption of an ordinance amending provisions of the Port Orchard Municipal Code Title 20 for enforcement and penalties. Again, Mr. Bond, this...
Yes, thank you. So this ordinance is amending the enforcement provisions and penalties found in Title 20 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. And I'll have Mr. Price provide further explanation to this. And it really has to do with providing the toolbox that's needed to enforce our existing codes, whether that's criminal or civil penalties, because courts require criminal charges in order to seek a warrant to enter a property for code enforcement purposes. And so it's really just cleaning up some of our existing flaws that carried over from the old Title 16. If there's anything else?
And exactly, just consolidating the enforcement and penalty provisions from the various chapters of Title 20 into one place, making them all consistent with each other, and then providing those options of criminal, civil, abatement, and any other legal remedies that are available to the city. And this also was presented to the council at study session last week, and this is unchanged from the version that was reviewed by council at that time.
I would move to an adopted ordinance standardizing and consolidating the enforcement provisions in Title 20.
Okay, is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion, which is to adopt an ordinance standardizing and consolidating the enforcement provisions in Title 20. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That ordinance passes. Moving on to Business Item E, adoption of a resolution adopting the final plat of Muirfield Phase 1 McCormick Woods. And Nick, it looks like that's you also.
Thank you. So tonight, we have the Phase 1 Muirfield plat. This is parcel C at McCormick Woods. It is the first 28 lots of the 46 that are proposed for parcel C. And while we did pass a moratorium recently in the McCormick Woods area, that moratorium only affected building permits, so the final plats can still be built and recorded. We just can't allow building permits until that moratorium is lifted. So we are recommending approval of this final plat.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution as presented granting final plat approval for plat of Muirfield.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt this final plat. Is there any discussion on this? As I understand it, this allows them to move forward, doing everything they need to do, but they will not be able to issue building permits for the individual lots until our moratorium is lifted.
That is correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on a motion to adopt a resolution as presented granting final plat approval for plat of Muirfield. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that is approved. Now we will go on to Business Item F, which is adopting a resolution approving a contract with Reed Middleton, Inc. for the downtown storm basin plan project and documenting the procurement procedures. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. On March 15th and March 22nd, 2019, the city's Public Works Department published requests for qualifications for the 2019-2020 Downtown Stormwater Basin Plan Project. By the April 5th, 2019 deadline, five statement qualifications were received. On May 8th, 2019, upon the scoring ranking of the SOQs received, and upon interviewing the top three qualified firms, the city selected Reed Middleton, Inc. for the project. Public works staff then worked with Reed Middleton to discuss, clarify, and develop the project understanding. On May 31st, 2019, the city received a defined scope of work budget and project timeline for the project in an amount not to exceed $206,593. And please recall that we received a grant from the Department of Ecology for $216,593, and that provides a $10,000 amount set aside for city administration. Staff recommended adoption of a resolution thereby approving a grant or a contract with Reed Middleton, Inc. for the 2019-2020 Downtown Stormwater Basin Plan Project in an amount not to exceed $205,593, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Reed Middleton, Inc. for the 2019-2020 Downtown Stormwater Basin Plan Project in an amount not to exceed $205,593, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? I think I have a discussion. I'm just trying to find it. In your staff report, Mark, in the summary, you have the amount not to exceed $206,000. In the recommendation of motion, you have 205. Can you clarify which amount is correct?
Depending on 216 in another area.
Yeah, and you have 216.
No, I've got 205. It's 206. So I offer a friendly...
Yeah, I will modify my motion for consideration to change the $205,593 to not to exceed of
Yeah, that was... Thank you. That was just me pat-finger-ing the keyboard.
Yeah, the contract definitely says 206.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any discussion on this, counsel?
I think we had a presentation or, oh, it was when we approved the grant. I think we talked in general that this is just a plan at this point. The consultant is pursuing on their own accord additional grants to extend this project beyond the plan. So we'll focus on the plan for the next two years, meeting the requirements of the grant. But at the same time, we'll be looking at finding funding to advance, like, one of the three basins beyond just a plan level, potentially, so.
So that's the consultant that's working for grant, to find grant funds for Task 2, 3, and 4?
It's not task work. It's they'll be doing that. We can't have them use grant funding to find more grant funding. This is, they'll just be on their own accord, you know, in their own, you know, marketing. You know, they just have access to a lot of different grants, and they just asked if they could, you know, pursue grants for the city to continue this program. And I said, "Great." You know, if you want to see what options we have to keep this thing going beyond just a plan level, that'd be great.
Is this, is this Plan 1 that would, if executed, would eliminate the flooding downtown during high tides and storms?
Yes, if, this will be a planning-level effort at this point. Ultimately, it's going to lead to a project that will have major components, which are, you know, defining the watershed for the three basins, the upper limits, defining collection and conveyance for those watersheds down to the waterfront to three different west, east, and central outfalls. And then at each outfall, you'll have some sort of discharge alternatives. Maybe one basin will do bio-retention, and another one, we do like a biofiltration for treatment on the two-year events. Above that, it would have a flow splitter that would be an outfall, a direct outfall that wouldn't have a water quality component to it, but would have a above-sea-level, non-tail water impacted outfall. And then the third condition would be during a high tide and heavy rain, the, when the two systems were backed up, a flow splitter would then run into some sort of a elevated outfall through a turbine pump. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking at having, you know, retrofitting the city, which doesn't have much collection conveyance, and has zero water quality quantity mitigation, and adding those pieces in. And then on top of that, dealing with the sea level issues with, you know, the flow splitter and the turbine option. So, yeah, it's exciting, but at this point, again, it's just the grandma Willow and the water, you know, it's just the beginning of the ripples out that will ultimately lead to a project that will address that.
Thank you.
Rubbing the crystal ball, when do you, when do you think that this could be wrapped up and done? I mean, in what decade will that occur?
I mean, actually having all three basins functioning? Or just having the plan done, the first plan?
All the basins. The plan is scheduled to be done in 2021.
2025 or 2022. I would say, I would hope that by 2025, we would have one of the basins actually... 2027, we'd have one of the basins actually in place, and then we have Ecology doing studies, you know, doing as a pilot project. And if that goes well, 2023, I'd say by 2040.
We're going to hold you to it. Can't wait.
That's on the record.
Any chance of getting it done before you retire?
No.
No.
Really, you know, a plan like that, I mean, obviously, well, if there was a major grant opportunity that said, "Hey, we love your plan," and some funding agency came and said, "Let's, let's make this a pilot project for Puget Sound," we would, we would gladly throw our hat in the ring. But if we're looking at this project on top of other stormwater capital projects pacing with downtown development, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that, because you're not talking about just building a widget down by the waterfront. You're talking about a complete upland collection convey, you know, curb gutter sidewalks and, you know, collection systems that go all the way up to, you know, on Sydney near Lippert. You know, you've got that entire reach, right, your watershed that Councilmember Chang just pointed to. So you're, you're having to develop collection and conveyance in those systems, get those physically built, just to get the water down to these three discharge points. So it's a fairly, and then, of course, the city being proactive, we would want to then take those systems, and if we were going to upgrade those streets, we would look at sewer and water, you know, and then to pave the street. So we would want to look at complete streets potentially associated with those. So, I mean, this could be a catalyst for a lot of road projects and funding that could potentially assist in those.
Thank you. Do you anticipate that it would affect any development, infill development, or affect any of the existing residential areas? This seems to go actually up to Kendall, from Kendall to down to the, so it's not quite as far as Lippert. But do you anticipate...
Well, obviously, as part of the plan, we develop the basin, and then from the engineering practices, they're going to make assumptions on build-out, so impervious, because each individual site, if you had an undeveloped piece of property, they're going to have to still provide their onsite water quantity, quality mitigation. But we'd have to appropriately size, and that's a part of our plan, is once we identify the limits and the properties that are going into it and the runoff that would be generated off that in the future, we, from an overflow perspective. I mean, they ran into that issue in Ridgetop, where, you know, they had that Ridgetop trunk line down at the bottom of the hill, and then they had all these accumulative effects for all the housing on the top of the hill that hadn't been originally conceptualized when they did Mickelberry and Ridgetop. And so obviously, we want to learn from past mistakes and make sure that we appropriately size the trunk line for a full build-out, so that no matter what happens in the upland, we can get the water down to these facilities, and then design those facilities with that flow splitter to then split the flow based on the inflow. So we will consider all the properties, either undeveloped or what their future development potential will be, because we ultimately have to calculate a 100-year Qmax through the system. And that's, that's just basic engineering.
I believe we had a motion and a second on the motion. Okay.
Yes.
And we did.
A $1,000 amendment.
Yes, okay. So are we ready to vote on the motion? Okay, so we will be voting to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Reed Middleton, Incorporated, for the 2019-2020 Downtown Stormwater Basin Plan Project in an amount not to exceed $206,593, and documenting the professional service procurement procedures. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. And we are moving now to approving the gen, or the minutes from our last meeting, which was the meeting at June 11th.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from the regular meeting on June 11th, 2019.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 11th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And there's one abstention, and that would be mine. Okay, we are on now to reports of council committees, finance.
Just report that we had the entrance conference with the auditor on Monday. It was a typical entrance conference. And then we have the next finance committee meeting scheduled for July 16th at 5:30 p.m. And then we have the next finance committee meeting scheduled for July 16th at 5:30 PM here.
Okay. And economic development and tourism, we are scheduled to meet July 8th. There has been discussion about changing that time, so I would recommend everyone being aware that we may change that to an 8:00 or 8:30 time. Did Carrie get ahold of you guys?
Yes, I will not be here.
Oh, you will not be here?
I will be out of town.
On July what?
July 8th.
July 8th.
I'm here.
And you're here, can you do an earlier meeting? And we were moving the meeting time to accommodate the mayor, and I'm not sure if that's been finalized. So anyone wanting to attend that meeting, please check the website.
And just to update you, I know the mayor can't do earlier, he's got another conflict, so it's only if you want the mayor there does the meeting, or only if, if you, if you want me there, it's got to be earlier, because I'm going to the same meeting at 10:00 as the mayor. And, but if you can get by without me and just rely on Carrie, go ahead and have it at your regular time.
Well, this is, this is what I'm going to say to that. I'm leaving town as soon as this meeting's over, and I will not be back in town till July 7th, so we need to make a decision today. Or the decision can be made, and someone can just let me know.
Did you say you won't be back until July 7th?
Right, I'm coming back...
Oh, after this meeting?
After, I'm leaving after this meeting.
Okay, I thought you meant the, okay.
No, I'm leaving after this meeting, and I won't be back until that Sunday, before the Monday meeting. But I know you have Mike Ziak coming.
That's the plan.
Okay, so is...
I'll touch base with him by the end of this week to make sure that he's still ready to go to, to come to that meeting.
Okay, and I don't know what else is on the agenda, I know that Mike was on the agenda, and if it's not critical, Nick, I suspect Mr. Ziak would prefer a 9:30 to an 8:30 meeting.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So if we can all be flexible?
Just let me know.
Okay, perfect. Utilities.
We have a meeting scheduled on July 15th.
Okay.
Oh, we're, you said you wanted to cancel, okay.
August?
It would be August 12th, I think you have initial...
So I think it's open right now.
Yeah, it's open right now, say I'm gone to 12th.
And sewer advisory apparently is August 14th. Land use.
We're going to meet July 1 at 9:30 at DCD. Ooh, next Monday.
And lodging tax.
CBD.
And Cindy's not here to talk to us about Festival of Chimes and Lights. And outside agencies, we're pretty light on those also, except I believe this Thursday is PSRC's executive committee meeting, which they would, at that meeting, approve their supplemental funding for transportation, so that the actions at that meeting can be very important to us.
Yes, and...
And with that regard, on the 28th, we have our PSRC RPAC, and I've asked Diane Linius, because she's my alternate, because I'm off, to make sure that, she's there making sure there's no shenanigan.
Okay, that's the same day, is it not?
Friday the 20th, I think you guys meet on the Thursday.
Thursday.
The 27th.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure you, you meet on Thursdays.
Right, right, right.
And we meet on Fridays.
Right.
So you would meet after the executive board?
But they wouldn't, they wouldn't...
Probably not a lot, but...
They're just an advisory.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, she's just going to be there to have our back, you know, maybe to defend us.
Okay.
Do you want to share the monumental, monument occasion that we celebrated at the PRTPO?
We did. We would thank the City Council of Port Orchard and the City Clerk of Port Orchard for helping with that, but the Peninsula RPTO was officially recertified last Friday, and we officially are now separate from the Department of Transportation, and Kitsepp Transit is our lead planning agency, and Jefferson Transit is our fiscal agent, and all of the paperwork is done, and so we're...
Kitsepp Transit is the lead planning agency.
Lead planning agency.
I thought you said funding, sorry.
No, Jefferson is...
I want to clarify that.
Oh, yeah, well, I may have money on the mind.
I haven't said anything yet.
Yeah, yeah, we may have money on the mind. Anyway, it's, that was really kind of a big deal and took a lot of work, and the group worked really hard to make that happen.
It was a big deal.
And so all of the councils and commissions along the way that approved the ILA did so timely. I know that the City of Port Orchard has asked for the completed ILA and all the signature pages. That may not happen until September. We invited, we had all of the statutorily required jurisdictions complete the ILA. We did extend invitations to join to all of the tribes, and we gave them until September. We did not know their timeframe for, you know, approving such a document, so we gave them until September. So we won't be providing the, the final signature pages until then.
Well, I would add, as a testament to your hard work, that we actually have all of the cities in all of the four counties, as well as the four counties that approved, signed the agreement, which is something that we have not had in the past. For example, both Paulsbone and Bainbridgees and Kitsepp have never really signed on to that, and they have this time, so...
Yeah, and, and, and the ports, the port of Port Angeles and port of Birmingham, port of Allen and port of Shelton all have, and all of the tribes that have been active members have, you know, signed on to the ILA. But we extended to some tribes, the Ho, the Quinalt, the Quiliute have never been active members. Neither has Port, Port Gamble-Sklalom or Saquamish. And so we gave them an opportunity, and so we're just, we didn't know how long it took to move things through their processes, so. Anyway, yeah, it was, and we did, we had some sparkling cider and toasted, and Jane Tom Sklalom provided lunch for us. It was, it was a, it was a nice meeting. Yeah, yeah.
Especially appreciated the paper cups to celebrate.
Yeah, yeah. So with that, we will, the mayor does not have a report tonight, so we will do report of the department heads.
Just to let you know that I'll be out of the office from June 27th, and then I'll be back on the 12th of July, but I'm down public works board on the 12th, so really won't be back in the office till the 13th. But it's, it's a staycation, so I'll be monitoring emails, especially if something happens with water-related issues or the $1.3 million related, I'll be, I'll be on call.
When do you think that you're going to open up, three months?
My guess would be the end of July. We don't want to open up the section between the two roundabouts until it's 100% complete with striping and thermoplastic and everything.
Appreciate that, I was just curious the timeline, so...
Yeah, we have to wait 21 days before we can put thermoplastic down, because we have to, you know, wait for the asphalt to, for the oil to cure out. So there's a 21-day, then we, then we can just hit that section, get it 100% done, then hit the two other legs with shifting traffic, and then once that's done, then we're opening it up.
Nothing to report.
Nothing for me tonight either.
I just have something real brief to report. So I'm working on the report to the state, it's to the JALARC, which is the Joint Legislative Advisory Committee. They're tasked with collecting the data from all the jurisdictions to report certain information regarding public records request, how many we get, how long it takes to respond to those, so I'm working on that this week, and I'm interested to see how much we did last year versus this year. So I do know that the police department has done, I think when I looked at the numbers, almost 100 more requests this year processing than last year or so, and I'm working on our numbers now, which is the rest of the department, or the rest of the city. So once I get that report, I'll be happy to pass it along to you guys, and then once the state finalizes it, I'll send it out to you guys as well, so. I think I have until August 1st, but my goal is to get it done here in the next week or so.
Are you recording the time it takes you to put together the report?
Right. I should.
It is part of this.
Right, yeah, so, yep, so that's all I have to report. Well, I, I will also be out of the office next week, so, but Janine will be here, Michelle will be here, and we will also have a new person next week in the office that Michelle will be training for, while she'll be away for a few months, so hopefully we'll, it'll be seamless, but, so, yeah.
The other thing I would just like to remind everyone, our next council meeting, I think, is July 9th, and I believe that we're going to have a ceremonial swearing-in of our new police chief, and perhaps some refreshments afterwards, so everyone remember that, and, yeah.
Great.
So the mayor did reorganize that meeting, and so you'll do your normal business meeting, and at the last citizen's comment, that's when he will administer the oath, or somebody will administer the oath to him, and then he'll adjourn the meeting, and then we have, we will be sitting out, sending out a quorum notice of the special meeting of you guys. It's a welcome reception to the police chief, so that the public can attend as well, so two separate meetings.
Thank you. Well, we made it all, all the way through the meeting before we started. We, we are now to our second citizen comment period, and we will ask the multitude of people in the audience if anyone wanted to make a comment. And seeing none, we will close the citizen comment period. And we do not have an executive session this evening.
I've got a good of the order.
Do we have a good of the order?
I just was going to observe that the night market, I thought, was well-attended. I went early, and then I came back late to pick somebody up at the foot ferry, and, and it seemed like it turned out pretty well. It was a good showing.
They ran out of food.
Well, that's good.
After a couple of hours, you probably went early.
Yeah.
It was moderately crowded around 8:00 to 10:00, but it was a nice event. I was impressed at seeing the people roughly between Sidney and Frederick. That, that area was closed off, and...
In the back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was people parked all over the place, and, and I think there was a few stores that were closed that I think had they been open, might have realized some business opportunity there, but other than that, I thought it was a success.
That's good, it's nice to see the merchants engaged in new activities and trying new things and doing things to bring people downtown and support their businesses, so, yeah. It has been a while since we've had, I think we've missed the last two months for economic development, so it's been a while since we've talked to the business community, so it'll be nice to have a meeting in July. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none?